Present.
Mike, present.
Here.
John.
Here.
John.
Here.
I pledge to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion for the consent agenda?
No vote.
A motion of second.
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Posed. Public input is timed, placed for discussion items not already on agenda with a timeout of three minutes each. Discussion pass by action in reference to Lisbon, Mount Vernon, Ambrose Service April report presentation.
Jake is not here yet, so can we?
Absolutely.
Forward this on so when he arrives.
Absolutely. Discussion pass by action in reference to purchasing supplies for sports complex.
Alright, as we discussed last time, we're gonna do the storm sewer, water main, and sanitary sewer for the next phase of the sports complex in-house. The two documents that you see that came in the packet, one's the cost estimate for everything inside there minus the ball fields. Basically, if you pull the concrete and what have you out, there's three thirty-five, five forty-five numbered on that sheet, that's what we'll reference tonight. Everybody should have this sheet in front of them, which, as I put in my notes, it wasn't, took them a while to get these prices. I had YTT verify, everything was on this DSG form, and we believe that everything is true and correct. So as you can see, the contract price, the three thirty-five, five forty-five, this would also include having somebody do the work that we're doing, and you can see that we're, our cost is gonna be one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and maybe two cents.
So the packet is including a labor estimation?
Correct. This would be us, this would be the same, this would be all the supplies.
This is just the supplies only?
Yep. So what we're looking at, I think Travis is on?
He is, he's the mat.
Okay. What we're looking to do is get permission to get this stuff ordered, and then there may be some additional charges like, I know Travis may want to rent a large excavator to speed things up, but I can have him talk about that. Travis, are you on?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay, it's just time-wise, if we can get a bigger excavator than what we currently have, it could dance the work into three weeks versus, you know, a month and a half, two months.
So you're talking, you're talking three weeks, you think you can have it on in three weeks?
Weather permitting.
Okay, and that's, that pulled everyone over your guys, or just three guys, what?
No, so that's three of us, it would be, be obviously Keith running the excavator, one of the other guys in the dish learning, along with a safety guy, which is the pipe guy that's handling all the pipes and pieces down to them, and then it would be me, half days coming up behind them, backfilling. And that would, that would leave Chris to do water, sewer, stuff that I can't get done. So three there full-time, four there part of the time.
So I guess tonight we're just looking for your approval to purchase the supplies on the DSG bill, and I don't know, come forward.
How soon will do all these parts begin here?
Travis?
Two weeks, two weeks for a majority of it, and then we're still waiting on a couple manholes that we have yet to hear back on, so we're hoping those are sooner than that. That's for our sanitary manholes where we gotta make our terms.
So are you, so you're looking sometime, between April, middle of April, start this then?
Yeah, I was hoping to be started, you know, first week of April, and we're, we're out of there by end of April, worst-case scenario.
Any estimation on the cost of the excavator?
Um, yeah, you're about, about thirty-five hundred bucks. It depends, the price, everybody's prices are going up this time of year, so we're trying to figure out where the new prices are. I'd come to you in fat before we do it.
Okay.
We do have a large hole we have to dig to get started, where it's gonna be right at our capacity for the excavator we have now. That's just because of the depth of the water, or the depth of the sewer, and then we're gonna have sewer and water, if you look on the prints, they're two feet apart, so you're gonna have a very large hole in that area to be safe.
Well, this appears to have, represent a significant amount of savings, you know, for one month labor, three guys, a very, two-hundred-thousand-dollar savings. I make a motion.
This one included later?
No, I know, I know, adding the, the difference between the two.
I agree.
And that's gonna be a huge savings to save. So I would make a motion to approve this list of supplies and to go ahead and get it ordered up.
And also, I can...
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Alright, discussion, discussion pass by action, reference to barn, two barns.
I think y'all had the email from EMC that was given to me from Scott Marnes Star, so I put this on the agenda, see how you wanna, how you wanna handle it.
So it kinda looks like our hands are tied, the insurance, the legal, everything about it, says the two barns have to come down, and the third one can get repaired. Kurt's here, were we gonna, did you wanna talk to Kurt about what the third barn?
I just had him here for any questions, I know that some of you had questions, it's in that email string, I've looked at other companies. EMC Insurance, they are about ninety percent carriers of municipalities and state. A lot of the other ones, I don't have EMC or self-insured. I checked with our agent to see if we could, if there's any other outside companies that he has that insure the barns, and, you know, his response is in there, the condition that they're in, and the tight market right now with insurance companies, he doesn't have anywhere to go. You know, and then I checked, like, okay, if we choose to not, I checked with the attorney on what liability we have, and obviously his response is to follow what the underwriting said at the insurance company, so. I did have Kurt here, obviously there's the third barn, they said we need to repair it so that it is stable, and then we have to put a fence around it if we intend to keep it.
The third barn?
Yes.
Oh.
We won't, you know.
We can stabilize it, we still can't use it.
Well, that's, that's just what the email said, I didn't go into all the details, but...
I think, I think like city employees can go in.
Yeah, that's what I...
They've covered, recovered by insurance with that, but as for citizens, they haven't been able to.
I wouldn't have any problem, no, we'd get visibility to look in the barn, do you really need to...
Well, how far is the fence away? What kind of fence would we gotta put around it?
This is still be put on the front opening of the barn.
Don't worry, this sounded like a perimeter fence to keep people away from it.
Do we know?
I would assume...
Yeah, it's gotta be around the, around the outside.
Around the perimeter, what, thirty feet away is it?
We really need to have the two and eligible buildings to be torn down to prevent any liability concerns, and the third building needs to be repaired and deemed structurally sound, as well as fenced off from the public.
First of all, how much is it gonna cost this kid to strengthen, structure sound?
Curtis, this is the hay barn, do you have any, so that'd be the one to the northwest.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I thought we made it structurally sound, you know, from the, from the, the, what we have done to it already, you know, I mean, we kinda...
Right, hundred and four that we had, and Kurt did the work from the structural engineer's report.
So do you, the structural engineer, he signed off and said it is structurally sound?
No, he hasn't come back, he just gave us a report as what he saw that needed to be done to stabilize it.
The way it looks in their email, stabilized and structurally sound were two different. They used the word two different times, so.
Well, that's probably true, because that's what we were doing, just the basics to stabilize them, then there would be more work to go in. I'm sure there's still more work to do, but, but yeah, we were just, we were stabilizing them, that's what Kurt was doing, the basics. And then, of course, there's more to do, just not as, not as big and not as much, from my understanding of the report.
Well, it never was the plan, and we were gonna have a barn dance and those things, so how much, do we have estimates as far as how much it would cost?
To make it structurally sound?
Structurally sound without entering the building, 'cause I don't see that anybody needs to go in there and stomp up and down on the floor to get a better thrill, you know, you're gonna, you look in it, so I would assume that the open doors would always be blocked from people entering.
Right, we'd always sort of talked about doing, you know, open fence gates that are in the, like, behind the, behind the big wood doors, so you pull the doors back, and so people can see in and see the equipment and stuff like that there.
That's what I thought, of course.
Information boards and things like that for them to learn about agriculture in Iowa, that was one of the basic ideas that we had. We never planned on people, you know, having weddings and kids climbing all over, and ladders and stuff.
Becky, you think the lasering of the barns that you have planned, you think that would, on that building, that would assist in this?
Yeah, well, it would assist in all of them, that's what we had, you know, that's why we had these guys, 'cause then, then we would have costs and all of that to, whatever, you know, gonna take to get these barns so that we can use them.
The problem we're gonna run into is just, we don't have a lot of time here, it's October that we have to have this completed by.
Well, yeah, and I don't wanna spend somebody else's money on doing that, if there're gonna be, you know, the chance they're gonna be torn down. You know, this is someone's personal money they put out here to do this work, and a grant we got from Lynn County.
How much was your grant from Lynn County?
Uh, six thousand, so eighteen thousand paid from other people.
From private donors?
Yes.
Well, I would think the first goal is, is to try and save them, would be my, my guess, they're, they're valuable part of history in Lisbon, but, and that should, to make those decisions shouldn't be that much expense, I mean, you don't have to bring it up to that point, you have to find out where it needs to be at this point.
Right. Um, well, you know, I couldn't agree more with you.
But, Becky, let me get back to that, there's six thousand and eighteen thousand, twenty-four thousand, is all of that money that has been spent?
No, it's, no, they have not, they haven't started the work yet.
So none of that has been spent?
Right.
Well, here's my problem, Becky, is, you know, I've offered, I mean, my mother would come back to home if I said tear it down. And I, I just, I don't see how we can consciously spend that much money and save these barns, those two barns that they have told us to tear down, where, you know, maybe we could save one, but we'll never be able to use it, but I don't, I can't say, you know, if this engineer comes in and says, you know, it's gonna cost you fifty thousand dollars to just get this stable, and, I mean, I just, it's hard for me to...
We need, we need the insurance underwriter to drive the verbiage and the actions that we need to take to salvage what we can.
I mean, you know, the engineer comes in and says, you know, you need to do this, it's probably gonna cost you twenty-five thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars, whatever it is, to stabilize it, make it structurally sound, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, 'cause we can spend money on that, but it's, you know, when it starts getting up to fifty thousand, sixty thousand, seventy thousand, I mean, that's when we have the problem.
Well, that's when we're looking for grants, I mean, we, you know, we never planned on being able to turn around and do something in one month.
I under, I understand that, but, um...
Now we're up against a timeframe, you gotta have it all done by October.
You know, and...
Well, and maybe, you know, maybe there's some room, you know, we've got room to negotiate with the, with the insurance company on that, if we're having someone come in and look at them, you know, maybe it's...
In all, in all honesty, Becky, to probably get those structurally sound, those other two barns, I mean, you're probably looking, I'm gonna guess, two-hundred thousand dollars.
Uh-huh, I wouldn't guess that.
There, I mean, and then, you know, and our insurance company has told us we had to have them down by October, is it October?
Whatever, yeah.
September, October, not really, but, but I mean, you know, we have to look at it as what is best for the citizens, I mean, if we, if we say, well, we're just gonna chance that no one gets hurt in there, and then we could sue for a million dollars.
No, we don't wanna do that.
You know, I mean, our, our hands are kinda tied also, I mean, we don't wanna do this, but our hands are kinda tied, what we got, what our options are. I mean, we, there, I mean, unless somebody wants to donate a bunch of money real quick, I mean, I, I really don't see any chance of saving two of the barns, I really don't, and I hate to say that, I mean, 'cause I don't, I don't see...
A lot of effort's been put into it, where we've gotten to.
I mean, I think we've got a beautiful park over there with those barns, and, you know, all mulled, the pond, the gazebo, I think it's a beautiful park, you know, and it'll never, ever get developed, but I just, I don't see that happening, I just, I mean, I don't, I don't see it happening. I, I think, I could, I see saving, the hay barn, called the hay barn?
Yeah.
We could put, get that one done, you know, and...
Is that the big one?
Do like, they do like, I think it's Knott's Farms where they kinda fence everything off, and you can look inside and you can't go inside.
Right.
But that's, that's how, that's how I see it, I mean, I don't, I mean, these guys might see it different, and, I mean, this, this is the good part of being about the mayor, I don't have to vote on this.
No.
But I just wanted to give you what I...
We're in a, we're in a tough spot, because...
Yes, you are, very much.
Do we spend the money to have them, you know, look at them and do the, do the laser shooting and doing all that, and giving us the prices, you know, and then, then have to tear down two of them, and that's a lot of money to...
It's like, you know, I hate, I hate to see you spend fifteen thousand dollars getting this laser stuff done, and they come in and say, no, it's gonna cost you four hundred thousand dollars to get those stable and passcode and everything, you know, I mean, so you just wasted fifteen thousand that you could've put on the other barn, you know?
Not to mention donated money, I mean, the people who gave the money and the grant people are gonna be like, wait, you spent fifteen K on that, and then that's it? You're gonna tear two of them down? I'm pretty sure, I'm gonna look, it would reflect well on us, seem to squander that money.
Well, I think we need to know, they need to tell us, if we don't allow people in those barns, if they're fenced off, you got two open doors and it's fenced off, you can look in there and that's it, what the requirements would be.
We wouldn't even allow, we wouldn't even be allowed to put our people inside those barns to set up a display, to leave the doors open, to be behind the fence fifty feet away.
Well, if we were gonna do any of that, we would need to do more work, that would mean that we would be getting grants to do more work on those barns, so people can be in there working and putting stuff in there. I can't think, you know, I can't think that we can leave so that they can blow over, you know?
Correct.
So we, you know, there, there would be an investment, but, you know, I, we've always talked about that there wouldn't be, like, unattended people in there, there wouldn't be, you know, a party in there or something, we wouldn't be renting them out to, that sort of thing, that's, that's a lot of liability, plus then the need of, you know, electricity and all that, and we don't need to do that either.
Well, do we know what, what standard it has, the barns have to be to, and do we know what an approximate bid is on the cost? It's gonna say, and I remember getting involved in something that everybody had a heart attack that was gonna cost a fortune when I was on the council before, and when they actually got bids, everybody said, oh, I didn't think it'd be that low. I don't remember what the deal was anymore, but you can get, you know, if we could get some actual prices on that stuff, and I don't think...
And we did, and there are some, there are some general prices on working on the barn, we've got a couple of reports that are gone through to the council and such, I'm sure Brandon's got copies of them, so there's, there's one for...
But those, those reports got us to the point we're at right now, which is a point of failure, they're, they're, the barns are recommended to be tore down, and those reports didn't help us avoid, you know, avoid that, so I'm, I, I think we need new reports.
Well, we, well, because we, because we haven't, we haven't rehabilitated them, all we've done is stabilizing them, doing, Kurt's been doing the bare-bones work, you know, getting the doors back on and that sort of thing, so that we could close them up was a lot of it.
What, what's our total spend so far on, on just the bare bones?
So we spent fifty thousand, three ninety-five.
I think that includes the gazebo.
I'm sorry, yes, it does, that includes the gazebo over there.
What about the one?
Forty-two thousand, five fifteen specifically on the barns.
So Doug's estimate of two hundred thousand to maybe four hundred thousand's probably not unreasonable?
That's not unreasonable.
Probably not, it, it's not.
I think, I think we're...
There's, there's two sides to the, to this coin here. It's gonna cost you something to tear them down, that, you know, they're not just gonna go away.
There's that too.
Uh, I mean, it, it's not gonna be cheap to tear them, there's a lot of material there that's gotta be gotten out of there or somewhere, uh, but, but, that doesn't say that it's right to spend a, spend a hundred thousand to save thirty thousand, you know?
Right.
Uh... Right.
I mean, I, 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 I run against that all the time, doing, giving somebody a price, you know, I'd say, well, you know, well, I think I'll just build a pole building, well, okay, you gotta spend fifteen grand to get this out of the way so we can get one in here, you know? So there's, there's a couple things to, but, do, do you have to, do you have to spend money to have somebody tell you what needs to be done, and, and, you know, do you have to spend that money, I mean, there's, who knows how much those, those guys get for that, you know? But you don't know where you're at unless you have that, you know?
Yeah, we need, we need better information.
That's right, that's right, I can't tell you what it's gonna cost to do it until somebody tells me what...
Right, that's what, that's what we were looking at doing, that's what we had lined up at this point.
But, but like you say, all of a sudden, here you go, and spend whatever it costs to have the people tell you what to do, and then you go, oh, no, we, we can't do that, now you just gotta throw that money out the window, you know?
Right.
And still pay to tear the barns down.
Or we could follow the recommendation by the insurance companies and go right to that step.
Well, if that, if, does the insurance company charge for that service? Has to say, okay...
About the assessment of the property?
Well, I mean, you know, what we gotta do to, to make the barns stable, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't know, I...
I mean, they're gonna, I would think that they would come in and they would make an assessment, they would inspect, and they would come up with a conclusion of what, that this is not up to snuff, but they're not gonna come back with a, you know, an itemized list, you know, similar to this parts list, that says, you need these seventy-two things, that, that's, that's gonna be a paid service of some sort.
Did someone from the insurance company come in last week and look at them again after Kurt's done some work on them?
I believe their underwriters, according to his email, did, yes, on the twenty-second.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking, we're looking at the emails right now, and...
The thing that we have to understand is stabilization to the insurance company, being stabilized, is more of, the work that Kurt did was to keep the barns from falling down today, he wasn't doing work that was to make them structurally sound.
For the next thirty years.
Correct, yeah, and it's my understanding from the insurance company, the amount of work that it would take to get, to get that work done is not possible by October, because of everything that needs done, nothing has been done to even stabilize the south barn, because when Kurt put the roof on in December, when it blew off again, he said, we've only, we had, well, we received fifty-one hundred dollars, and I believe the, the bid was for twelve thousand or fifteen thousand for that south barn, and he came in here and said, we're gonna have to readdress this in the spring because that's not gonna be anywhere near enough. So that's just to stabilize it, that's not to make it structurally sound, that's just to stabilize it, and I assume structurally sound would be to have the ability to get people to safely walk inside without getting hurt.
Yeah, or lose.
Correct, and I think the fence, why they're wanting it, is it's still probably, it's an old barn, it's a liability, I mean, people, kids climb in there, it's an attractive nuisance, they use that term in the email, I think they're still gonna want the fence around it even after you get it structured sound, just to make sure the liability is covered, that we've done everything we can so people do not get hurt on that property.
So have we seen, I mean, is there an example of an exhibit like this in a, in a similar town that could be pointed out?
Hard to determine.
Okay.
Right.
The issue is, they totaled these buildings out, that's...
The, after the Durachio, the...
Yeah, I mean, that's what they've done with them, and it's the same insurance company.
Sure.
Just raise your hand, y'all.
Yeah, I just was wondering, how much would it cost to just build a big fence around the whole thing to make it non-accessible until there's more time to talk about what are options?
Surprisingly, a lot of money, but...
I'm not sure that satisfies the insurance, but that's a good question.
But, I mean, would there be an option to do that, which then buys you more time to find more answers?
You gotta ask God that question.
I could see them being individually... I don't think they're gonna be, they won't, they probably would love the fact that you'd put a fence around it until you tore it down, but if you still ended up tearing it down, then you're gonna have this fence all the way around this, which, I mean, it is what it is, but...
Then our employees will have to access the property to mow, or abate nuisances or other things that are going on.
Sorry, how does this affect our status with silos and smoke stacks, or is it a national park, I mean, no potential would have available to us?
Negates it, I would imagine, we applied for it, we got it, the, we have to tear the buildings down, it's over. You have a different answer?
Silos and smoke stacks is interested in agriculture, that's only one part of the agriculture we have here in town, we have a room over here at the History Center donated, or dedicated to agriculture, too, and I've dealt with them before, years before, I thought they were odd with smoke stacks and silos.
Already in?
We're not, but we are now, so I, it's kind of a secondary point, where if we can't continue to have liability insurance, then they'll cancel our whole policy on everything, is that right?
Yeah, you didn't have to do it for your policy.
Yeah, and so I think we need the information from them on this north barn, what... what is the definition of being good enough to have liability insurance? Because I can think of various ways we could, you know, have, have it so no kid or no person could get in without, uh, taking equipment to cut a hole in there to get in, and that's a different situation. Because I can see if you had a brand-new barn in town, uh, it still could be considered an attractive nuisance.
Right, that's true.
Then you have to also have a waiver of segregation, uh, for anybody to do work on, and a whole harmless agreement. So they have to find people that are willing to-
And certainly if we get somebody in to, uh, salvage the materials, which would be great, on the other two barns, uh, you'd have to fence it to keep people out when you're taking it apart.
I, I, I would love to fence it tomorrow if I could, because if it represents a liability to the city, then, then we might, then we might be covered for.
And we know, we know it's a liability.
But we know it's a liability, we've already gotten two, you know, high-level advices to demolish. I, 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 yeah, I'd love to get fenced off tomorrow if I could possibly, to abate that, you know, about, abate that liability until we deal with it.
Well, I think we should not spend any more money on the two south structures and get some more information on the north structure, what they expect us to do.
Well, we got, we got two police officers in here. Um, what, what are liability, if we did fence that in, let's say, this north barn, if someone still crossed it and went in and got hurt?
Be the same as you swimming pool?
Yeah.
You'd have to, I mean, you're gonna want trespass sign and nobody else, it's like the way they have.
I think you'd be in a better position.
I, I agree with you.
If somebody gets hurt on city property, cities are thought of as having deep pockets, and you've got a problem, no matter how you look at it.
We had a hand up in the back row. I can't see, I can see the hand. He's got a question, he or she's got a question.
I, I can see, because that big guy's in front of you. Long as you're not there.
Um, I, I think we should keep up the barns.
I, I, I wish we could, I wish we do, I do too, I wish we could. What it is, is, um, what it comes down to, it comes down to money, you know, I mean-
It's gonna cost a whole lot of money to make that, that we don't have.
You know, we just, we just spent a hundred thousand dollars to buy just stuff that we're gonna put in the ground over at the, for the, for the bald islands and the sports complex over here, and we're gonna, I mean, if we had to spend five hundred thousand dollars just to keep those barns up, I mean, we could maybe put it over there. I mean, it's, it's, I understand where you're coming from. It's a hard decision for us, it really is. I mean, a lot of our hearts are, we want to keep those barns too, and I mean, we gotta look at what we think is financially sound for the city and the citizens.
Okay.
Okay.
It's, but the barns are a pretty thing to look at, even with the trees.
I agree with you, I agree with you. I agree with you there too, but what it, what it comes down to is, the barns, even if, even if they stood for another, let's just say another fifty years, we didn't do anything to them, our insurance company says they are a liability, that we gotta tear them down. If you would go in there and get hurt, we would be financially liable. Or when your friends went in there and got hurt, we would have, we would be liable, we would be liable even if the barns are, are still structurally sound, I mean, we're still liable. But I mean, us knowing that those barns could come down at any time, it could be a huge lawsuit where it's caused us, I mean, it could cost us millions.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kurt?
Kurt? Yeah.
How much to fix up the best of the three?
Well, I, I think where, where this is going is, you're gonna probably be able to afford to fix up one, but not all three.
That's what I said, Bill.
I mean, you know, forget, you know-
Yeah, the one they've cited that can be salvaged.
What, Becky?
Um, because this is, they're a historic district, so that helps us get grants. If we tear down two of the barns, we'll lose the historic district standing, and so then can't get grants to fix up the third one. Not can't, very likely that we cannot get that third one by itself on the national register. And so there goes our chances for grants. And you talk about doing a hundred thousand dollars for equipment for the, you know, for the sports complex, you know, are there grants being used for the sports complex? We're willing to do the work to get the grants to work on these barns, so that we're not spending five hundred thousand dollars on the ones.
No, we, we, actually, we probably use the lost funds and that, just like we use the lost funds to buy the property that those barns are sitting on?
And a grant to help with that too.
There, how many of grant did you have for those barns, to buy the property?
Um, Connie got a rate grant from the DNR.
You have any idea how much it was, Christina?
Eighty, I think.
Eighty thousand?
Yeah.
What are you gonna do? Well, first of all, I mean-
Do you wanna get a fence around the barn?
To find out, to find out what needs to be done to that barn, you gotta get an engineer in there to find out what needs to be done to control.
And that would be the insurance company's engineer.
Yeah, because they're the ones we have to please.
Yeah.
And we, and we can pull up the engineer's, um, report, which was, you know, it's, it was a real, you know, umbrella sort of thing, it didn't go into a lot of detail. That might help, just for have that information out there. Um, this sounds so much like the little red brick house on Main Street here. Um, John, you and Mike were on, were on the council then.
Right.
You know, wanted to tear it down, tear it down, and they, and somebody, they hired somebody to come in and look at it, and they're like, oh, tear it down. And then, um, we got, we asked if we could get a grant, and we got someone to come in and look at it, and they said, you know, yeah, needs to be gutted, but it's, you know, it's stable, it's a good building, and it's eligible to be on the national register. And, um, and now it sits and it's an attractive piece, and plus we found out, in the midst of that, there was a bid to tear down that building, and it had been a while, and someone had said, well, let's get, let's check and get a, a bid and make sure they're not gonna just leave a big hole in the ground, and it might quadruple the price to even tear the thing down.
Yeah, just for-
So it's making sense to do something. And just took, you know, it took a lot of research and, you know, and negotiating, and now we've got an attractive building on Main Street instead of an empty lot.
Well, do we have hard, fast facts that tell us how much it would be to tear it down? Tear it, how much it would be to fix it to the bare minimum? I don't want anybody in those barns, but I wouldn't mind them being looked into, you know?
Right.
Um, I, that certainly adds some ambiance to Lisbon, in my opinion. But do we have those facts? This is gonna cost a bunch to tear it down.
I don't, I don't have those facts, maybe Brandon does, maybe, I don't know. That would be, that would be a good number to have, all right.
Hey, Brandon, our, the emails that you guys sent us that said, um, since the structural engineer has determined the barns are not structurally sound, increase liability, blah, blah, blah. Who, the structural engineer with that, was that, was that the EMC?
Yes, yes.
Can I hear what you said first? Is that, you said ours?
Yeah.
Maybe write a report or saying that because of this, or total not, or they're structurally not sound, or?
Right, he totaled those out a long time ago, but has someone been there since Kurt did work? We don't know that. Oh, you do know that? You said it came on the twenty-second of February?
Yeah.
Correct.
Sorry, I have one question. There was somebody that came on February twenty-eighth, does that sound right? From a company to look at, um, making a bid for something, and you remember, who's on the other one? Sorry?
Anybody aware of that? That somebody was here on the twenty-eighth?
Did somebody come on the twenty-eighth?
I was, um, out of country, I don't know.
And then there was like some meeting that, or like there was like a group trying to figure out what to do with the space, and that they were gonna submit that to someone.
I don't know what you're, too, too what you're talking about.
I don't know, it doesn't matter.
I have no idea.
Okay, maybe I was.
What's that? I'm just sure of it.
Well, the, the most important one is the big barn, right? Or not? Am I making an assumption?
I don't, I think the two, I think the two larger barns are, are, we're taking a hard look at. Kurt, how do you feel about that?
Well, that, that, that little corn crib there, you know, I can see why that would take a lot of money. I mean, you know, I went up there and put that roof back on there. Well, the reason the roof got blew off this time is because it isn't put on there right, and so the whole roof's gotta come off. I mean, we're starting over. Uh, you, you see what I mean?
Yeah, I do see what you mean.
Uh, and it's, it's-
There's a lot of work on that.
It's rotten, I mean, anybody can walk in there and see that the boards are rotten, and there's no foundation on the north side, so, so, you know, the, if you don't have a foundation and a roof, you ain't got much. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, that's, you know, if you're gonna-
Yeah, you have to go.
Digging around it to put a foundation in, and then when you finally get the foundation in, you gotta go up on the roof and tear it all off and start over, like, uh, you, you don't, you ain't got much, you know? I, I'm not, I'm not trying to be negative here, but I'm just trying to lay it out there. It's, and, and first of all, if an engineer gives you guys a price as to what it's gonna cost to, to do whatever has to be done, doesn't mean that you're gonna find a contractor that'll do it for that much money. I don't-
Right, they're, right, they're asking-
At least it's a starting point to know-
It's a starting point, that's right. I have to have, I gotta have something to look at to say, oh, they want this fixed, no, they gotta have this, and we gotta use this certain board, and, so, and, and we have to have something that, if you wanted to bid it, and I wanted to bid it, we gotta be bidding off with the same thing. We can't just have-
Right.
One guy to bid it here and say, oh, that's why I think I wanna do it, you know? Don't work that way.
And, and there we could be talking about, you know, thousands of dollars of plans being drawn.
Thousands of dollars of that, you know, and I-
Just, just to get to the point to get a bid.
Yeah.
And then it's still, we, we gotta get all this done in, in six months too.
But you're also got, you also have thousands of dollars to tear that down.
Yeah, well, that's, that's true, that's true.
Yeah, but a lot less than that has to happen either way.
I don't know whether it's less than a bid.
I, I would say, if it was me, I would, I mean, I know, I know, it'd be nice to have them all, but I'd concentrate on one and call it good.
I just, I just look at it like, I'm gonna look at it like, the EMC's structural engineer came in and said that two of them have to be torn down, that they are not structurally sound, one can be fixed, I think. Um, there were, I don't look for another structural engineer to come in and say, those are sound, if you do this, when they know our insurance company already said that this is not sound. Because they ain't gonna put theirself on the hook for it either.
Could we-
Well, they, they know they're not sound the way they are.
But could we move-
And so they were gonna look at what it would take to make them sound.
Could we move forward by having Brandon talk to them and see what's required for them to have liability insurance on the north one for sure, and maybe a general estimate, what did we cost for the middle one? If we agreed that the south one-
They won't issue one of them. They won't issue one of them. They, they told us that they have to be torn down.
Well, if, unless we-
I think that was the question that was-
I think we know the answer to the middle one anyway, it's too expensive, but we do need to know what is the standard that they're wanting us to bring in the north barn. Now, we're willing to cooperate with them, and, uh, yeah, I, I do agree, if, if we could put a fence around them, but we'd want to know what kind of fence do we have to have? How tall, how close?
Well, and, and if I, yeah, I'd like to know if they want us to fence it just when we're working on it, and that we can do the, you know, like gates and the door, so people, people can walk up to them and look in once we're done working on them. Or they, you know, or to keep everyone completely away from them, you know, ever and ever have a fence around them, you know, to kind of find out from them if that's what they, they mean? Which one do they mean, while we're working on them or forever and ever? Because that's a whole big difference of fence too.
When Scott called me to make me aware that they were coming, and he was going to get some questions answered that were presented to him, he said that a black vinyl, six-foot-tall chain link fence was, was what he was thinking.
Yeah, that's, it's probably, that would cost more than I would imagine, but could we get a figure, a ballpark figure on that?
Around the north barn?
Anything.
I, I think that-
Any others?
As we tear down the other two, we're gonna have to have something to keep people out of the area. It's gonna be more dangerous once we start digging.
Once, once we're in this, in construction mode, I don't think, it just can be orange fence off or whatever-
Yeah.
Construction company wants to do, it takes, their insurance would cover it themselves when they're doing that. Their, their insurance would cover it when they're the ones, I mean, it's like down here, you know, they got this all blocked off, that's their, that's certainly, that's not us.
Yeah, that's true too.
Right.
But that's in the bid, I mean, the, the service of adding that-
Yeah, no, yeah, but I mean, it's-
Something we will have to pay for when we tear it down, fix it, or whatever we, you know, hope to do it.
Yeah, that, yeah, I mean, you got fences in everywhere. You, you guys have all seen bids, I mean, you know, mobilization, how much-
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not surprised if they come back with twenty K to fence around, and then another twenty K to, you know, engineer. Then I pulled the numbers out, I took this, but-
Right, I get it.
Really, it's the north one that we need a permanent fence evidently, right?
Well, that's, I don't know from-
Yeah, that's what, that's what's in the email. They want a fence around the north barn, they want the other two taken down. Anytime you enter a contract with a contractor, they're responsible for that construction site, making sure that the signage is appropriate, that the site is, is safe. You guys can attest to that.
Yeah, so, so when you, when you bid this, the contractor will come in, it'd be responsible to fence around the other two that you've taken in. It'd be responsible to clean up the site, to haul everything off, to put the site back to natural. The third one, if you decide to fence that when you did the reconstruction, that company would install a fence when they did the reconstruction. That was correct.
They, they would, they would put their own fence up while you do the construction, but then we'd have to put a fence up to allow-
I would assume you'd put a fence around the property, have a gate in that drive, they could go in there and put their equipment, it's, it'd be, and then they would fence in any hazard within there, digging holes or whatever, they won't put it in there.
Well, assuming we do this, is there a plan for that area? Assuming we tear down the barns other-
Save the third, stabilize it, fence around it. What's the plan for the rest of the property?
Right. What, what do you have to do?
Well, I don't know, because I just heard-
You have to fence it on a good one.
I just heard about, you know, that they're gonna be torn down or wanting to tear them down just Thursday or Friday when the, I guess Friday, when the agenda came out, so I, there's no, well, there's no plans for, there's no real definite plans for the park anyway.
I mean, that, that would be kind of an, an interesting area to then look into, of if you could develop a structure, or not even a structure, but like some kind of educational materials of what used to stand here, um, take photos of things as they progressed over the years, talk about what went into decisions for maintaining it versus taking them down. talk about what went into decisions for maintaining it versus taking them down, um, and still have it be an educational opportunity. I don't know that it would still qualify for Childs and Smokes Act, but I think it would still be an important piece of our Lisbon heritage to show.
Yeah.
You know, it's funny you say that, cause when mom was like, I talked to her about that and I said, um, why don't we just build you a pole barn there, where you guys could have farmer markets and stuff like that in there? Instead of spending all this money on all these barns, you know, we built a nice pole barn where you could have farmer markets or, you know, meetings, whatever. So, I mean, it's funny you say that, I mean, and that might be something to look at, you know, if we take two of them down, put it in a building like that, where we got pictures from what the barns look like, you know, some little barn board, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, or, you know, you could, you could have some artwork that was made, or some tables that were made from the reclaimed wood.
And, I mean, and then again, though, you're looking at, you know, we're gonna spend a hundred twenty on pole barn, too. I mean, it, there's not one of us up here that wanna tear the barns down. There's, there's not a one of us up here that do wanna do that, um, but our hands are tied.
You gotta do what's right for your city and what's, what's the best for the community. But also kind of thinking sometimes if we have to tear something down, if we can build something that will help build up our community, but also preserve our heritage.
You know, I, I went in and I talked to the fourth graders at school and, um, one of their biggest thing was, when we talked about, we talked about that property a couple, and I said, you know, when we bought that property, nothing will ever be developed on that property, there will not be another house built over there, those, they'll, you guys as kids will be, that probably look the same, you know, forty years from now.
Trees will be.
Hopefully, yeah, maybe there'll be more trees and bigger, bigger pond for them. But I, and they're, they're excited that they could, I mean, they realize that having that as a park, I mean, was huge to them. It really was. They weren't really saying anything about the barn, they really weren't, but I mean, having that as a park where they wouldn't be, you know, they could go over there and play or fishing or whatever, so.
And we can remain, you know, we can retain all of that in a safer condition. So draw your tears, because I think you're gonna be happy with what we have out there.
What, what could it be, what could it be?
Yeah, we could have, there's a lot, lot of potential there in that area.
I think she's volunteering to help with whatever gets built out there, she'll.
I was wondering, you, you both have some good ideas for what we should be doing with it, do you currently serve on any boards for the city?
No, we live right across from it, though. We're highly vested in what our property looks like.
Well, we would ask you to get involved with the park board.
Which one, which house are you living in?
The one that was built in twenty one.
The random one right there, my son just lived right up the street on the corner.
Okay, Dakota.
Yeah.
Okay, you're Dakota's son.
It's more of the police cars all the time than.
What are our actions, what are our action items right now?
Well, I, I think what some of your actions could be, would be, see what needs to be done with the third, or the north barn.
Okay.
To get that structure sound, so it can be preserved, have a fence built around it, I mean, your actions could be that. Tear down the other two barns. Well, I may get anything you want, I mean, you could tear down all three, I mean, that even happened, but, um.
I, I'd just like to try and say.
Not from tearing down barns.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, like, I just don't know how we can get anybody to sign off for those other two barns that could ever be structurally sound. When our insurance company said they're structurally unsound. I mean, I, I know.
But I do, no, I, no, I, I agree that as they are now, they are not structurally sound.
But I, I'm saying is, our insurance company said they're structurally in sound, unsound. If Nate goes in there and says, I can fix these, our insurance, our insurance company is still gonna say they're structurally unsound, unsound.
Well, I don't know.
It makes that, it makes that, I'm gonna sign off on it, cause he don't wanna get sued, cause, you know, if we get sued, who we're coming back on?
Well, that's a question I'll, I'll ask, um, O P N, that was going to do the assessment of them.
If they're gonna be, if they determine that they can be fixed, are they gonna be the ones responsible that they're structurally sound? And they'll cover all liability in case anybody gets hurt there? Cause our actions is to tear them out by our insurance company.
Uh huh.
I mean, I, I hope you can find a company that will take on that responsibility, but I don't see that happening.
Well, I mean, they, they fix up old buildings all the time.
But, but also Becky, another thing is, I don't wanna spend, I don't wanna suspend four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars on fixing barns up.
I don't, I don't want us to spend that much either.
I mean, I don't wanna spend a hundred thousand, where we could take that hundred thousand and build a brand new, brand new, um, pole barn right there for you guys to put stuff in.
Yeah, I think you're missing the point.
What, what point am I, what point am I missing?
That, that to see that, to see the stuff and the education in the actual.
I, I understand that, but.
That's a, that's a lot more of a draw, a family on dedication.
But I'm, I'm just saying, you're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars, I'm just making up numbers, a hundred thousand dollars to have somebody come in and get these structurally sound that we can't ensure. Our insurance has said that they are structurally unsound and that they have to be torn down. And there's not gonna be, there's not gonna be a company out there that's gonna take the liability of saying these are structurally sound when our insurance already said they're not.
No, I agree that, that the insurance is absolutely right right now, they are structurally unsound. But as, as I had a conversation with, with, um, Scott Morinstar, was that, um, I asked, so then what happens if we do work to make them structurally sound? And then, you know, then what happens? He said, that's when the insurance company would come back in and see if they deem them structurally sound once we get the work done.
Okay, so if, so there is a, there is a number that could be, that could, that could, uh, pay for the dismantling of the barns, the rebuilding of a foundation, the rebuilding of walls to make it structurally sound, and then reassembly of the wall space or something like that to salvage it. But can we get it done in six months? And can we get it done with, whether it's funding from a grants or a giant donation or, or any, any funding that the city would be willing to, to kick in, which we don't have a budget for?
I mean, I, I, I.
I, I agree, I mean, but the thing is this, I mean, money buys, it can buy you anything. If, if we had a million dollars we could spend on these barns, we could absolutely salvage them. But it would be a very extensive project, probably take greater than six months.
Way more than six months.
Would, would a million dollar investment be worth it for, you know, the benefit that comes back to the city? Or ten million dollars, or whatever the, whatever the number is, we, we have six months and we have to come up with the money. Or Becky and, and.
We have to come up with the money.
Well, we can't come up with it in six months.
Yeah, that's the only way I see this, saving it from being demolished, so that we don't lose our insurance.
How long would it take, like, if you decided, like, if the vote was like, the vote happens on day one, how long does it take for the barns to be fully demolished and taken down?
I wouldn't have a clue.
You'd have to get a bid. Getting, getting into a schedule for a, for a demolition company to come in and do, do the task.
You'd have a better guess than I do.
Well, I wouldn't, I mean, I, I don't know, I, there's demolition companies that'll come in there and it won't take a very long, but it's gonna cost you a lot of money. I mean.
And so you go down their schedule.
I would assume it would be less than a week when they start tearing it apart.
Yeah, and when they, they pulled in there and they wanted that out of there, it'd be gone.
Oh, they're done, trust me, it's fine.
So we have some time to like, think about things. It sounds like a lot of people just found out about this recommendation less than a week ago. Is there a way that maybe this could be tabled until next meeting and that gives people more time to kind of?
I, I, I really don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with the structural, I mean, the insurance company has a structural engineer that two barns are unstable. You guys wanna get some other engineer in here to say, we can stabilize them, but it's gonna cost you this amount of money. Get it in here, if you can find me somebody that's gonna, and then they say, we can do it for whatever. I just don't want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix these barns up anymore.
But we're all guessing on numbers right now, so maybe just like having a couple of weeks to kind of pull together what numbers are, then you can make a decision based on.
You'll just gonna get anybody to, I mean, they can try, but I don't, I don't see it happening.
Well, we have, we have two reports with general numbers, like I said, I'm, I'm sure Brandon has them. He can email them to you guys, they're, they're thick and they're boring, but there it is.
So, you had a question?
I'm sorry?
Can your mom cut you off?
Um, can I guess how long it will take to take down this structure?
The, when, when the company comes in, it might be, if they tear it down, though, it'd be probably a week or less.
Maybe a week or less, or maybe two weeks or less?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Sure.
We'll make a motion that we say one of the barns, and if they wanna get their structural engineers in here to, to get it, to, uh, to take the other two down, and to get the structural engineers to get them in here before May first, and give us a deal. If, uh, if it's not in here by May first, I make a motion we tear them down.
Do you want, do you want to give a price on how much it's gonna cost?
Yep.
About first one up?
Yep, yep, no, undo it. If they can save them, they can, if they can, then we, we've got, we have to turn it down.
When you say, when you say them down, you're saying the whole kit and caboodle?
Yeah, we'll save the one.
Save the one that's recommended by the insurance letter.
Right.
And demolish the other two. And May one would be our deadline for determining action on all of that.
Right. Or a council meeting, or whatever that is.
At the council meeting.
Yes, May one.
It won't be May one, it'll be never on the first.
About a meeting that month?
May thirteenth.
I'm, I'd like, I mean, the plan follows what the recommendation is by the, by the insurance as well as the legal representation.
I'll second that.
Do you have a motion to second? Uh, to Rick. John.
Hi.
Kevin.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Nate.
Hi.
So, Brandon, what, you and the history, and our history board, um, they have everything in here by May thirteenth, by May thirteenth meeting, there'll be structural engineer, how much it would cost to fix it, get it up to where it is structurally sound and we'll be able to insure it.
The one building?
Um, no, all three of them, that's all for all three of them. If they wanna, if they wanna save the other two barns, we need to know how much it's gonna, how much it's gonna cost.
Well, the insurance company, structural engineer.
There'll be a structure, and our, our, and our insurance has to sign off, saying, you know, if they do all this, yes, we'll insure it.
Need to address the safety issue of the buildings as well, do we need a, I think we need a fence around them.
I don't know what.
Can we take, can we take that time and have Brandon to get some no trespassing signs?
Yeah, I mean.
And I'm as favorable as anybody on, on those barns, but when was the last time we used them for anything?
We'd never use them for anything.
Right, they have different prom pictures.
Say, yeah?
Somebody took prom pictures outside of them last year.
Somebody uses them as a backup for prom pictures.
Can we get temporary fence around that, like, just, I know it's lame, but snow fence and fence posts, you know, the city employees could get them and no trespassing signs? I mean, can you jump the fence, yep, can you cut the fence, yep, but I mean, if you go into that trouble, you know, you've, I mean, I, I, to get the chain link fence permanently out or on there, it's gonna be a huge job.
Huge job, expensive, take time, we'd get the snow fence at the end of the week.
We get like snow fence with no trespassing signs around there, or some, or jersey barrier, cement jersey barriers, or whatever, or?
No, we'll get the snow fence by the end of the week, I mean, well, here's, here's, probably worse for our children's court.
Either way, we gotta.
Yeah, but we, we can fence them off and put no trespassing signs up, but I mean, Becky, so basically, did, that's what your option is? That, did you hear what I said?
Uh huh.
Okay, so basically just, it's May thirteenth, come back here and hopefully you got an engineer that says, it can be saved for twenty thousand dollars and.
I'm telling you, we have two reports already, Brandon has them, he can send them to you guys.
And how much are they gonna cost us to save them?
They want to go and ask them.
The reports predate the current assessment of tearing them down.
To make them, to make them structurally sound, that our insurance will say that they're structurally sound.
We have one from Hoot and Coyote from, not me, you guys have reached out to Hoot and Coyote, they came and for long-term repairs, it was anywhere from a hundred eighty-three thousand to two hundred seventy-four thousand. That was back in two tw- two thousand twenty-one, and that was for all three of the barns.
On total?
The other four.
On total?
It's, it says it's an estimate between a hundred eighty-three thousand and two hundred seventy-four thousand.
Yeah.
That's for all long-term repairs, um, and then they've got many repairs and short-term repairs on here, too, but I'm assuming that if we did it, we're doing long-term repairs.
And now we do realize that everything's more expensive now, but still.
Yeah, so I think you can easily add thirty percent to those numbers you just did.
I, I agree.
So we need half a million dollars.
Could you give Brandon a copy?
Yeah, absolutely.
Same one we had.
That's all you have.
Yeah, so it's a lot of them.
I'm sure we already have, but it's.
Well, to start, one way or the other, we decide, do we need to vote on anything?
We already did.
But I, we, I do, for sure, we need to get a bid on the north barn of what it's gonna cost to get that stable, to building stable, where we can save that barn.
Yeah, I want to save it.
I will call and get the insurance company's definition of what it would take for them to deem it, so we're not throwing money away.
Right.
I will get that.
Get whatever their recommendation is if we need to get professionals.
I don't think they're going to get any opinion on the other two, cause they already gave it, however, I will ask. Um, and then, um, go from there.
Can we ask them to clarify if we need to have that, um, a permanent, say we, say we're saving the north barn? To ask if we need a permanent fence around that, I mean, permanent?
That's in the email we do.
And I, Becky, I would assume it'd be like up in Harvard Street, you know, you have the fence there, but all the doors are open, so you can walk around and see inside it. I mean, I would assume even if you, you could probably come in inside the fence as long as they can't get in that building at all. You know, and let's say they're wiring all of windows, doors, everything, where they can't get in, where they can't put it.
And that's my question, cause I talked about how they would do like an iron gate from, you know, ground to the top of the opening, and so you open the, you know, you slide the big door open and no one can get in. If that would be considered, you know, safe enough, so they can walk up and touch the outside of the barn, but there's no way they can get in the barn, all the windows are gated open.
Yeah, this, this sounds like an attractive exhibit.
We'll, we'll have Brandon look and see what their requirements would be for that. Would, if it's, if we had it so they cannot enter the building, or if they can enter around the building?
Right, because that's, that's a huge cost to do a, you know, a decent fence around a building like that.
Well, I, I think you're gonna put a fence around the property anyway, there's gonna be a fence around it anyway. So, when you guys aren't, when somebody ain't there, that property is secure.
Uh huh.
So, like, if you have, if you guys are doing something where it's a tour or something, it's secure, you can open the fence open, and you guys are in charge of making sure no one goes in. You know, wouldn't, at night, at night time.
I think I would do both.
Yeah.
Fence the doors, so they can look in.
Yeah.
And fence the property, so that they can, so it can remain secure. But then we can.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Get some numbers to save that building.
Yep.
Save the property, and if by some miracle we can save the other two, I, I don't. Get some numbers to save that building, save the property, and if by some miracle we can save the other two, I don't think it's reasonable, but.
I can see where the, the corn crib is probably not the one that we would work on saving. If we're, you know, if we're starting to weed them out, that would be the first one to go.
So we're going to.
Curbs, I, I agree with Curb.
We're going to do everything that we can to try to save them, and I don't, I mean, I mean, no, we'll get them, I know we can get the north barn for sure, we can save that.
We, we do have a limited timeframe, and although I agree with, with, you know, Rick's, by May one, we're going to lose six more weeks of time, or that's six months. So. All right, Brandon, do you need anything else from us?
No.
Well, did I name it for you?
Thank you, Becky, for all the important stuff. Uh, let's go back to discussion of possible action in reference to Lisbon, Alberta, and this service, annual report presentation.
Can I throw a presentation up on there?
Sure, technically. Fine, do that.
You have to be setting up. You're going to set that up the whole time. Hey, I want, I want his name, or her name. I want his name. The little girl, little girls. Amorat or most office box. I want her post office box and stuff too. We need a taser.
She's not even with you an hour and ten minutes.
Jacob Muller is next one, while you're setting up.
Perfect, I like it.
Um, resolution oh nine, twenty twenty-four, approving mowing contract extensions.
All right, uh, this is for Jordan's Property Care. Uh, this is very similar to how he presented it the last time he did. Um, you have the current rate and the new rate. Um, I made, uh, in my notes there, I put in there, um, obviously, he lives across the street over there, and I've heard nothing but great things over at the cemetery. Um, never heard a bad comment made. Um, I don't recall many issues with their equipment damaging any property. Um, so anyway.
So this is just for fertilizer and stuff right now, and then this doesn't include like the mowing?
Yeah, this is.
It does, the second, the second one's the mowing.
No, the second measure.
Okay, second one's, so every, every time they, every time they mow, that's how much it's going to cost us?
Correct. Now, keep in mind, we also work with St. John.
We're budget, we're budget a lot for this.
Correct. So the rate, it's forty bucks a time. Now, keep in mind, this was last negotiated in nineteen, eighteen or nineteen?
They, they.
He's agreed to go for five more years, so this would be the rate. So essentially, over a ten-year span, it's going to go at forty dollars.
So every time they mow, it costs us seven hundred and sixty dollars, but they don't fertilize and spray every time?
No, that's just, it gives you every line item. That's how he put his bid together. Just to show you, if he were to, like, so for instance, on the front page, if he, if he does, uh, weed and feed for the turf, the baseball field is a hundred and fifty. Now, keep in mind, during the time the school has a contract, they pay, they pay their rate, same rate, but they pay it during the year. We just get it going for our spring soccer, and we'll just make sure we stay on the program.
Yeah. Do you have a motion to approve that? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Your motion is second. Nate?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
All right. Ready now?
I'm ready.
All right.
Oh. It was perfect. All right, so I figured we'd do something a little different for the annual report this year. Um, we're going to move right through it. A lot of it should be an overview, and then we'll focus a little bit more, um, when we get to our strategic plan for the next five years. Um, so a little bit about us, this is kind of stuff that you, you guys remember. We came and talked about five years ago, um, kind of when I first got into the community. Um, so first and foremost, we are here for the community. Um, Lisbon and Mount Vernon are our primary goal, primary focus. Um, our district in all is about a hundred and fifty square miles on a bad bay. Our secondary surface area is about seven hundred square miles. Um, luckily, those bad bays are, are a lot more, um, are a lot less frequent. Um, but while we were dealing with a staffing crisis kind of during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, paramedics were in a huge shortage, and we were, we're kind of going all over the place. Um, currently, we are staffed and able to operate at the paramedic level with the critical care endorsements. We're able to function at the highest level in the state of Iowa, um, which is great. It is a, it's a big testament to our crew, um, the work they put in, the training they do, uh, to get that extra certification. So our mission and vision, it's kind of been tried and true. Um, you know, our mission is to provide excellent care to our community, make sure that it's community-focused, and that we are, are really truly taking care of our folks at home here. And our vision is ultimately to be the best. Um, I think that's everybody's, but we, we definitely hold that to our heart. Um, we want to maintain excellence in EMS in every way possible, whether that be the care that we provide, making sure that we're approaching patients with empathy, with compassion, as well as the training that we're providing, um, all of our members, you know, everything from our drivers, EMTs, the fancy EMTs, paramedics, making sure that they're able to address emergencies that may arise in our community. So, as I'm sure most, if not all of you know, um, we were established in nineteen seventy-three, um, a group of concerned citizens came together, formed the, uh, the ambulance service after an incident in town. Um, I believe it took over forty-five minutes for an ambulance to arrive, um, numbers that by all means are unacceptable. Nineteen seventy-four, and actually July twenty-sixth of nineteen seventy-four, we took our first ambulance call. Um, since then, we've been here, we've been excited to be here, and we've been providing excellent care for our community. Um, ultimately, we are five oh one C three, that's operated by a board appointed by both cities as well as one volunteer representative. Um, so although we're a nonprofit, we're really part of you. Um, it's definitely an interesting dynamic, and it's something that we're proud to be of. Um, you know, it gives us the ability to come to you and talk to you and tell you about all the good things we're, that are going on, as well as giving our board, um, a little bit of freedom in the direction of the service. Um, so you can see, as far as our organizational structure, you guys are at top. Um, ultimately, our board is going to do out the direction of the city if there are any major issues that occur. Um, we do have Dr. Tony Carter as our medical director, uh, who actually used to be a volunteer with the service while he attended Cornell College. He's currently an ER physician for ECI AC, um, so he serves, you know, St. Luke's as well as Jones Regional in Anamosa. Um, it's awesome to have somebody that has state in the service, that wants to see us, um, truly providing good care, making sure that we're staying on the forefront of EMS, um, and kind of pushing things forward that way. Our roster is, is honestly, um, probably one of the strongest in the, the state right now. Um, it's hard for me sometimes to go places, and they're talking about rosters of six, seven, eight volunteers, and then they get to me, and I kind of, very bored. Um, and then I get stares. Uh, so we do have some, some paid staff, some career staff. Currently, I am the only full-time member. We do have two part-time paramedics at this time, uh, that kind of help out with daytime, weekend coverage, things like that, just to augment our numbers. It's getting harder and harder for us to find paramedics that aren't already being, being pulled three or four places. And even with part-time staff, we're typically a second, third, or fourth priority in their life. You know, obviously, they're going to have their primary job, their family, um, extended family, bingo night, and then maybe us. Um, and that's kind of one of the things you get with part-time staff. They do try and, and contribute as much as they can, and we're very thankful for the coverage that they provide, along with the paramedics that we have. Um, so I believe I told you guys, we did nine, I know I was off by a few calls when I came after the first year, but we were actually eight shy of a thousand calls this year. So we did nine hundred and ninety-two calls. We were actually dispatched for one thousand fifteen calls. Um, so the calls that we didn't respond to would be things like inter-facility transfers, where if we were to send an ambulance on the transfer, we may not have had an ambulance provide coverage back home, um, or, or a situation similar to that. Uh, the only nine, one calls we dropped were when we physically didn't have a unit to respond, um, which is amazing, um, especially when you start looking at counties surrounding us, um, relying on volunteers. It's just, it's getting harder to get the twenty-four-seven coverage. So you can see, um, response times. So when we look at response times, there's two numbers that are important. There's our average, um, our median, um, when you put everything together, what's our average time out the door, what's our average time on scene. But the number that I like more is ninety percent of the time, when will we be on scene? Um, our average time is right where we kind of want it. We want it seven minutes or less. Our ninety percent time's a little higher than what I would like. Part of that's due to the geography of our, our cities. Um, our cities are very long, um, and there's two main corridors through the city. There's the Business Thirty corridor, and then there's the, the Main Street to First Street corridor. Um, obviously, Business Thirty, um, is a little bit more conducive for traffic. Uh, the Main Street, First Street, which is where most of our volunteers end up funneling through based off of where they live, is a little lower speed, stop signs, stoplights, things along those lines to get to the station. Uh, so it's something that we're always watching. We do have, um, a good handful of state, of crew members that actually stay at the station when they're on call, whether that be they come and work on homework, um, hang out, you know, make dinner with the crew, or there are some of our volunteers that are actually from outside of the city limits that have to stay at the station and make the response time regardless. Um, so it is something we are watching, um, maintaining, and keeping an eye on to make sure that those definitely don't get any longer, but finding ways to cut them down, and we'll talk a little bit about that here in a little bit. You guys can stop me if I'm going too fast, or if you have any questions, but I'm thinking everybody's ready. Um, so our dispatches. So you can kind of see, over the last three years, we're growing. We're growing in all respects, whether that be calls in Lisbon, calls in Mount Vernon, or the calls that we're responding to that don't match those zip codes. Um, more recently, we've seen a big uptick in Jones County. Uh, a big piece of that is, is the inter-facility transfers. Um, again, we were backing up Anamos quite a bit to make sure that patients were moving. Oddly enough, and, and actually not really all that odd, there were a fair amount that were our community members that we were moving from Anamosa to another facility, um, which is always kind of a cool experience to be able to provide that service to our community above and beyond the nine-one-one response. So now we can get, looking at some dollars and cents. Um, so revenues, uh, the biggest part of our revenues are fees for service. Uh, so that would be what we bill up to insurance, uh, Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, self-pay, car insurance. Um, but contributions, uh, we've got a great community. Uh, they've done a fantastic job of supporting us, uh, through our donation drives, whether that be the roundups at Brothers Market, uh, Gary's Foods, and then our annual letter drive. Um, it's been a huge piece of why we've been able to move forward with capital projects. Uh, I think at some point, we're going to talk about, we're purchasing over the next few years about three hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of vehicles, um, between an SUV and an ambulance, and that's, that's all been done through fundraised, um, dollars as well as, uh, grants that we've been able to, to obtain. So when we look at our expenses, our biggest expense is staffing, um, and that's kind of two-fold. That's with myself, with part-time staff, as well as the, the call pay. Um, so our volunteers do receive a stipend for the amount of hours that they contribute on call, where they're tied to the pager, as well as call response, um, and that's all factored into that forty-two percent. Equipment, it's not getting any cheaper, and patients are getting meatier, um, which results in rising equipment costs. Um, when we've dealt with shortages over the last three years, sometimes we start looking at different vendors. We lose out on bulk pricing, contracted pricing, um, so we're paying a little bit more for equipment. Um, equipment changes, things along those lines. And so this is my favorite statement. You bill your patients, so you shouldn't need anything else past that. Well, that's true. We can bill patients. Whether or not we get paid and what we get paid are two different things. Um, somewhere around eighty percent of our patients bill our Medicare and Medicaid. Uh, as you can see, our rates, so our typical bill for a standard advanced life support call, so that's an IV, some medications, um, maybe taking a look at your heart, pretty standard call that we do, and a trip to Cedar Rapids is roughly thirteen hundred dollars. Now, when we bill Medicare, they're going to come to us and say, so we're going to accrue five hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents for that trip. However, we're only going to pay you eighty percent. The remaining twenty percent is the responsibility of the patient, which is great, um, especially if that patient decides to pay, um, which usually happens, which is good for us. Um, on the flip side, if it's a Medicaid patient, they're going to tell us, you get a hundred and seventy-three dollars, um, thank you for your service, and good luck. And we say thank you. Um, before depreciation, our average cost of a call is four hundred and ninety-one dollars. By the time you figure in, um, equipment, cost of readiness, um, that's not including cost of vehicle replacement, building replacement, anything like that. That's just sheer annual cost. Um, our average cost is four hundred and ninety-one. So anytime, you know, we get into a situation where our bill's not being paid, um, we get a Medicaid call, um, anything like that, you know, that definitely impacts our bottom line, um, which is why if you really dig into medical billing, um, the unfortunate thing is that you're always billing above your true cost in order to recoup the costs that you're not recovering, so. So, prior to twenty twenty, uh, there was no real capital improvement plan. Um, there was no real plan to replace ambulances, buildings, um, anything along those lines. With the board, the direction of the board, um, really kind of starting, um, two thousand and eighteen timeframe, um, forward, we've been able to get a plan in place, looking at lifespan of our cardiac monitors, which are about thirty-five thousand dollars a piece, and we have three of them. Ventilators, twenty-five thousand dollars a piece, we have four. Um, Lucas devices, sixteen thousand dollars a piece, again, we have two. Um, looking ahead at these big costs, and what do we need to be fundraising for, what do we need to be looking for grants, and when are these costs expected to occur, so that we can have funds set aside and be ready for those purchases, as opposed to going, oh, oh crap, our stuff's not working, we better go, go visit someone. Um, and as we've seen with the ambulance, um, with the replacement of our ICD, it's done wonders. Uh, I feel a lot less stressed. I hope Doug feels less stressed. Um, as we look at things, we have more freedom to be able to, one, an opportunity arises for replacement, um, to seize that versus being put in a situation where we have to take the first thing that comes. Um, so, again, over the next seven years, we're looking at a building project. Uh, we're out of space. Um, as our communities grow, as our population ages, as the demand for our area grows, um, we're getting short out of space, or short of space. Uh, currently, we do all of our staff training out at the, the police department, simply because we can't fit them in our station, in our training room. Um, a lot of our classes, community classes, are held off-site, which means removing training equipment, um, just because, again, it's kind of the same situation. If we get more than four or five people in there to do a CPR class, by the time you set up mannequins, have the space set up, you're tripping over people. So we're really looking toward a smart move, a smart growth process for what it would look like to get that space, um, looking to see what our service can support, uh, and really start looking at that capital campaign to raise those funds. Working with engineers, um, kind of like what you guys are, are doing with the buildings, um, we've found some of those target pricing, we've found, we've looked at phase project, we've looked at a new build, um, and ultimately are, are working to find the best possible solution, where we can get with that. And then, as our volume continues to grow, as the demand grows on our volunteers, as the compliance increases, we're looking at what it would look like to be that fully hybrid service. What would it look like to have a volunteer-driven ambulance service with the support of paid staff, um, to really make sure those initiatives are being done, making sure we're staying compliant, um, and making sure that we can provide that top level of care to our community twenty-four-seven? What are some of the possibilities and partnerships that we can form with clinics, with public health, where we can help offset those costs to provide a higher level of service for our community, um, even looking outside the borders of our district to see what kind of partnerships in the region we can sustain and develop? So that brings me to the next five years. So that brings me to the next five years. The flexible staffing model. So as many of you have seen the SUV probably driving around town responding to calls. Currently, our goal is to be staffed with a transport ambulance of minimum two people, ideally an advanced EMT, EMT and driver, some configuration of that, with our paramedic resource being available in the SUV. So what this allows, and it's saved us a numerous amount of times, is it allows us to deliver the proper level of care to the right patients. A couple of weekends ago, we had, it was just kind of one of those things, it was a onesie twosie day. Our first truck would get paged out and it wouldn't be five minutes later and our second truck was getting paged out. It happened three times in 24 hours. Thanks to the crew, how we were configured and staffed, we were able to manage all of those patients and make sure that our highest level provider was going to be most critical based off of the dispatch information. It's a great resource. We're able to, you know, we have a patient that's a little bit less needy, not as many requirements, we can break crew members away. So now we have that available resource in town when the next call comes out, because it's not an if anymore. It's definitely turning into a when situation. Again, space for growing needs, community service, community and service training, looking at the run data that we have, you know, watching how many people are calling for chest pain, how long is it taking them to call for chest pain, or even more so? We've found that most people aren't calling us for stroke-like symptoms until after they're out of that initial window for the clot-busting drugs, outside of four and a half hours. They're waiting to see if it resolves. We want to be out there educating all of you that, hey, if these symptoms are occurring, don't wait. This isn't something to wait on. Call us, let us come and do an evaluation, and let us get you to the right place so that we're not delaying care or potentially causing a worse outcome. Having the space to facilitate that training in a place where they can also see the equipment and understand the resource that they have in the community is huge. Again, spaces for the volunteers. One of the programs that we've had that's been really successful lately is we have remote workers who come and plug their computer into another, basically dual desktop at home or at the station, and they work from home from the station. Boom, daytime coverage. That's an amazing piece for us, to have people that are able to come and do that. The other things we look at are internship programs, taking an EMT from the community that's interested in paramedic training and housing them, supporting them, mentoring them throughout the program for a trade-off of you do X amount of on-call hours a week to support the ambulance and we'll support you. My end goal is to grow that into two positions. Currently, we have one position for that, but if we could have a year-one, year-two rotation where they're constantly revolving, supporting each other, that gives us incredible coverage, daytime, weekend, and it's obviously a resource for them. And then, like I said, using the run data and the information we collect to build a resilient community and making sure people understand what they're up against. Why do you call the ambulance for chest pain? Well, because we can call the hospital before we get there and they're going to have the cardiologist standing in the room saying, let's go upstairs and get the heart cap, versus going to the ER, registering, going through triage. Now they tell you you're having a heart attack and you're going to wait 25, 30 minutes for the cardiologist to show up. Let us be that benefit. So these are our goals. Ultimately, we want to continue to provide the consistent, high-quality care that we've been come to know him for. We want to continue to bolster our recruitment, retention, and make sure that we have a reason people are staying. We want to get away from the mentality of volunteers coming here and saying, I'm going to do it because nobody else will. We want you to be here because you want to be here, because we provide you with the opportunity to learn and belong to an organization that is known for excellence. We want to make sure that we're sustainable, that we're not always coming and asking for funding, but that we can also provide the service level that's expected and needed for the community. Make sure that if something should happen within the organization, we have the structure that we can continue to operate and maintain our continuity of operations and to become a leader in training, not only for our service and for our volunteers, but for the region. What that brings its own set of benefits. When you provide a good service to your neighbors, they tend to partner with you, work with you a little bit more. We've seen great relationships with Mechanicsville Ambulance over the last five years. They come and back us up, we back them up, and we know exactly what we're getting when they show up, which is a huge benefit to us. So goal one, you know, we're going to look at our clinical guidelines, we're going to make sure that we're providing the best care, the standard of care at the time, make sure that we're keeping our members up to date, providing up-to-date education, have consistent staffing levels, and ensure consistent high-quality care, and make sure that we're reviewing those reports, those calls, to make sure that everybody's on board. So we want to make sure that we're not only recruiting members, but we're keeping the members we have. Experience is a big thing. It's essential to have those mentors for new members. So we want to make sure that we're recognizing the volunteers who stay with us, and we want to make sure that we're supporting the members through an orientation as they're coming on, so that they feel like they can hit the ground running versus getting in the truck and going, I went over this once, three months ago, and I don't really know what I'm doing, because nobody wants that person showing up at your house. And we don't want that either. We want to make sure that when we get a volunteer, when we get a member that joins our service, that they feel like they're supported and that they're part of an organization that has their back. Again, making sure we're retaining long-term volunteers, smart recruitment. I've always said we need to have recruiting booths up at high school graduation to grab all the EMT masters, because now they don't have all of their kids' sporting events and extracurriculars, so they need something else to fill their time, so why not hop on the ambulance, right? So making sure we're looking at people like that, making sure our staff is interacting, and again, looking at how can we make people want to be on-site more? How can we make people want to be working, volunteering for the Lisbon-Mount Vernon ambulance? So again, meaningful partnerships with local healthcare organizations and EMS partners. Is there an opportunity in the future that we may get one of the pre-standing ERs that are popping up within the communities? Would there be an opportunity for partnership where we could contract and provide our paramedics to work in the ER to offset the cost of having paramedic staffing 24/7? Looking at developments like that. What about a community health program where we're going and working with public health to make sure patients aren't falling, which happens to be our number-one dispatch, and staying up on two feet, or giving the rehab that they need to keep them moving? Again, make sure that we're looking for consistent and sustainable revenue streams. We had a situation where our billing company transitioned through a merger, and for about six months, our billing revenues decreased while they were working through the transition. We want to make sure that if that happens again, we still have the revenues through alternative methods to support our operations moving forward, so that maybe we're not super tight. Strengthen current fundraising efforts. Like I said, our community is amazing. The support they give through us through fundraising through the letter drive is awesome, but it would be nice to get people inside, show them the equipment that they're buying, and making them recognize that their investment in the ambulance is getting something. So opportunities for the community to engage with service, coffee with the crew, again, cookouts, opportunities for people to come in and learn about us. So again, continuity of operations is huge for us and making sure that everybody understands their role as our organization changes, as we maybe see additional roles added. So evaluate and improve community health literacy. This is where we come into talking about, don't wait four and a half hours to call an ambulance when you're having left-sided facial droop and a headache. Call us right away. Let's see if we can do something about that. Making sure that people understand what their medications do and how important it is to stay on top of them. And providing that community education through various topics, various methods, whether it be newspaper articles, classes offered throughout the community, and then upping our CPR, Stop the Bleed courses. First on the Scene is a new course that's coming out that I'm hoping to get into the community more. It kind of takes elements of identifying those life-threatening emergencies, CPR, Stop the Bleed, and culminates them into one class that I feel like gives people a great overview of how to be a good community responder. And then again, back to our space needs. What's it look like to have a training center where we can facilitate that training for the community, for our members? Can we become a training center where we can train the EMTs ourselves? So that was a really quick, high overview. Do you guys have any questions?
That's what you do at the end. Great job. I mean, not to drop calls, not even the amount of calls you have, but just with the amount of knowledge you have to staff and report. I appreciate every one of you. I mean, like two of them, two people in this room were here probably when the ambulance
Okay.
I remember coming down here as a little kid and the ambulance here, the ambulance in Mount Vernon.
Yeah, no, it's been fun. I'm currently going through the archives and trying to get everything digitalized, the old minutes, all of that, and it's a lot of fun reading through the minutes and hearing the same arguments and gripes that are going on now that were going on 40 years ago. So it just makes me chuckle every once in a while.
So if you build a new building, you're building in Lisbon?
So that would depend. So when we...
If we find you the land, if we buy you the land?
There's always room to talk, so. Honestly, that's where we're struggling, is where our building sits now is about the perfect spot, more or less right on the city line. It has access to both the east-west arterials. The bypass has decreased our access outside of city limits, east-west a little bit, it kind of complicates things. Typically, we're just going down the Lisbon Boulevard at this point, hopping on, dirty there, or meeting the crew, Mechanicsville-Stanley, Clarence, Tipton, Bennett, Olin, there, whoever calls that day. So, but no, it's a good spot, it's secluded, so we're not bugging too many people other than the ones across the street.
There might be some space a couple blocks this way. We're going to take it out a couple buildings.
I don't want to get in on that.
I hope the thought comes to me.
Do you have any questions?
No, thank you very much. The transition has been, I've been through the whole thing from day one. The transition has been tumultuous at the first minute and has worked smooth ever since. Forty years or whatever.
Yeah, well, we're hitting 50 years of operation, you know, this July, and it's pretty incredible to hear. We just had, so if you guys remember the Arlet Fox story, that was on KCRG last year. At the national level, they're launching a new pediatric emergency care readiness project, and ourselves in Mechanicsville are actually going to be included as kind of the introduction to that based off of our cooperation and our readiness to take care of upper and have a positive outcome. So we're really excited for that. They came and did some filming over two days, so that'll be released in May during EMS week. So it's cool, you know, when we can kind of back up. When I say that we strive to be the best, we really do.
I've always been impressed and initially looked for the worst because that was the first big time in a Melbourne or in Lisbon cooperating with anything. You know, you couldn't get them to agree on what color paint to paint stripes.
Well, you know, I do wish your guys' reds were closer, because if you pulled up the play like, you know, to go with the school, the problem is, is we do a red ambulance and a burgundy ambulance, it just looks like we didn't match our colors.
Yeah, we'll take anything for her.
All right, thank you.
I guess.
I'm an engineer. I'll be quick. Eric?
Need to get some vacation. I'll just give you an update of what's going on. We're working on the Highway 30 overlay project. We should have numbers for you next time for meeting, so you guys can decide what we're doing there. Downtown, we plan to leave on Wednesday. The only thing to note is that we found an old coal chute. The city filled it in with sand. We also found another one in Bill's Bar, in front of Bill's Bar. That'll be taken care of later on down.
Amort's at, yeah.
Say that again?
Amort's.
Yeah. But I can imagine all these buildings probably have coal shoots in front of them, so that's something to keep in mind whenever we do future projects here. That's about it. Unless you guys have questions on current project.
All right, thank you. This has been going smoother than I anticipated, quite frankly. I have a great complacency with down here.
Always work.
The only thing I really have is, we started flushing out one of our mains that we found with the water main project, and we're using that water to try to help fill the pond over there. So as long as we're flushing, it's going to be decorated, so it's not going to do any harm to any fish that are left in the pond, but we are filling that literally at around the clock, because we're going to run that through the days when we're here on staff, and then we continue to have the pump from the well there running on a timer at night.
Is that it? Okay. Any questions?
Thanks, Travis.
Person, Eric?
A couple things. We have a St. Patrick's Day activity going on this week for the kids around town, so you can find that on our Facebook page. And then at the end of the month, we'll do our Easter egg hunt that we do every year. And then other than that, I will be starting soccer at the end of the month as well, and then start mowing here soon, so.
Questions for Greg?
How's our field doing over here? Soccer field, still growing?
Yeah, it's growing.
Not going to use it this year, maybe?
No, we won't use it this year, especially with all the work we did, the new building that we put in and stuff, there's still matting and stuff that he's done around that building. But we seeded it last year, and we'll do a seed again this spring and in the fall, I would assume, too, so it's coming.
You said you're going to start mowing. Are, we still have in Leaks having mowing? Yeah, it was a play. Gregory?
She's got it in, but she's had too many late nights, so she cannot make it tonight.
Anybody got any questions for Greg or for you? Do you have anything for night?
No.
Please move on.
Beyond what's in the report, a couple things to put on your radar. June 14th will be our annual K-9 golf outing. The Corinthians are the one fundraiser we do for our K-9 program, and that funds pretty much the entire operation of the K-9s. It provides training, provides food, medical bills, anything that's needed for that K-9. Built it an account, so when it's time to retire our K-9, we have funds available to replace the K-9 at that point as well. So June 14th, we are looking for teams, four-person best shot, and you can sign up. Businesses should be getting postcards any day. I think they've gone out or getting ready to go out here shortly. If you haven't seen them, they'll be coming out pretty soon. So looking for sponsorship, whole sponsor, flag sponsor, or team registration for the four-person, taking the first 18 teams that register from that standpoint. Other thing I want to put on your radar, we are very, very close to wrapping up the construction project at the police department, which is great from our perspective, planning on hopefully having the building portion, building inspection done Friday, cleaning up some odds and ends and getting really done hopefully within the next week or so from that standpoint. So I will be looking to probably doing a council open house, bring in, try to bring both councils into a, to one meeting for a 30-minute walk-through, hour walk-through, something like that. So you guys can see that. We will plan to do a full public open house either during Police Week, which is in May, or some other time. We're trying to identify a good time to be able to facilitate through that. Don't bring the public in, you know, grill some hot dogs or do something there to showcase the place for everybody to come in and see. It's looking good, it's looking much better every day, and it'll be nice when it's done, absolutely. So I'll keep you posted on that, but just wanted to put it on your radar, probably something in the first part of April.
Like you question, Doug? Any questions for Doug?
Yeah, I've got another PowerPoint. Nothing, nothing additional.
The only thing I have for it, is Saturday night, we have our St. Patrick's Day fundraiser on the tin roof from eight to midnight, free will donation out to the world. Just a reminder, March twenty-seventh, it's a Wednesday, seven o'clock here is the joint meeting with the school board, I'll keep reminding you of that. Been busy with the downtown project, meeting with Y T T for the sports complex, a lot of surprises we continue to find with the water main project, so thankfully that's about over. Numerous building permits going right now, which is a good thing, people building, doing different things. Just make sure that if you have questions, I'm here to answer questions that you have, I don't know if I can answer. We're gonna start with brush leaf, yard waste is starting up soon, so people don't start and ask about that, obviously it's warmer sooner than normal, so just be patient with that. You've noticed the windows at City Hall here, they've started, the windows across the top, they've already replaced, and now they're starting to, down here, if you recall, these weren't quite installed correctly, so those are done. I was thinking they were gonna be here today to install the lawn, and I don't know if it was too windy for the lift, and I chose not to, is my guess, but that's all torn out and ready to put the upper window in, and I'll move on down to the lower part. I think we're still pretty close to on schedule with paving and everything downtown, he said they're gonna start paving Wednesday, and then just as a reminder to everybody, to make sure you get your golf cart permits, so we'll keep putting reminders up for that, but that's all I have, have to answer any questions.
Do you need structural engineering?
We have assisted company, Calum Burns, to do structural.
Andrew, Brandon, Christina?
Just a reminder that our March twenty-fifth meeting will start at six-thirty, because we have to have a public hearing first, where we'll open it up, can't talk about what the topic is, for thirty minutes, and then we'll close it and then do our wedding. Yes, our next meeting starts at six-thirty.
The city school meeting's at seven.
That one's too deep, Greg.
This is the new formula that the state has put out, so we just sit here and do each other for half hour.
You can talk anything except for city business.
I suppose our fee goes up, right? State's gonna pay that.
That's all I got.
Yeah, Justin, you did?
No. Counsel, me.
I don't have much, I just want to make sure that the safety's assessed, or is assured at the bars, and, you know, if we carry out the fencing options that were presented, whatever's most cost-effective and reasonable. One last thing, happy early birthday, Doug.
I didn't buy your present. No, 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 it's a good thing I got. I don't really have anything.
When are you gonna open up the drive out there, get the bricks to the new conference for the sports complex?
When are you gonna pick out the, the block?
The winter, obviously, it's probably, I don't know if it'll snow again, but we can get that done.
There's been a lot of cars that have been out there.
Brandon?
Yo.
Hey, we're waiting for those signage that she just told us about for out there, we can't open that until we get the phone posted.
I mean, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't mind keeping it closed while you guys are doing the water project out there, so. I don't bother you with the technicals. Yours.
A lot of new things being considered at the library, so if you have any suggestions, stop in the library and let the directory know, that's all I have.
Jim? No, I just wanted, we're not against, we really don't want to tear those barns down, but we are obligated by what our insurance companies tell us, I mean, we gotta do what other people, we can make our mind up ourselves, but in all, we have to listen to what they tell us to do, and make a decision on that, so. I mean, I don't want anybody in this town thinking that there's five people up here that want to tear those barns down.
This is strictly a timing issue.
But we've made up our minds that those barns are coming down, we have, I mean, we have to do what is right for the city, and, I mean, it's a tough decision sometimes, it really is. I mean, every one of us has been in that decision, that process before, and it's, a lot of being in that process, I mean, that's why we run for city council and mayor, I mean.
It's good, I think this job, and this is not one.
I mean, but I just want, I mean, I just, there's a lot of things that we decide that we do take to heart, I mean, it's just a willing, not that we're deciding this kind of stuff. That's it. We'll be here six-thirty next...